Okay, at this time, we'll call our meeting to order. In compliance with the Freedom of Information Act, notice of meetings and agendas were posted and furnished to all news media and persons requesting notification for executive session, a public body may hold a meeting close to the public for one or more of the following reasons: discussion of employment, appointment, compensation, promotion to motion discipline or release of an employee, a student or a person regulated by a public body, deployment of a person to a public body, reference to leaving fire protection district board, also item two, discussion of negotiations, incident, proposed contract arrangements, and proposed purchase or sale of property to see legal advice, but legal advice related to pending threat or potential claim, or other matters covered by attorney-client privilege, settlement of legal claims, or the position of a public agency in an adversary's situation involving the assertion against the agency of a claim, Davis versus Jasper County, Cameron Holdings versus Jasper County, Horowitz-McDowell versus Jasper County, airport matters, removal of fuel tank, professional services contract with Holt Consulting Company LLC, Rizlin Fire Contract, lobbying services contract exit three, tax map number 063-26-14-001, and 063-26-14-002, and tax map number 067-00-01-010, coroner's office contracts for transport, discussion of intergovernmental agreement, ambulance service pursuant to six-1-190, discussion of IGA Fire Protection Emergency Services with the town of Rizlin, project showcase legal representation, item five, discussion of matters relating to the proposed location expansion of provision of services encouraging location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area served by public body, prospect update, and at this time, we will call for motion going to executive session.
I'd like to make a motion for executive session.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carried, and we will now go into executive session. Okay, at this time, we'll call for a motion to come out of executive session, please.
To move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and do we have any motions as a result of our executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we move to authorize the county administrator to execute a waiver of conflict regarding Parker Poe's proposed representation of unified resources and its affiliates and fee in move negotiation with Jasper County as requested by Parker Poe in this disclosure correspondence.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries, and we have another motion.
Go to Senator.
Okay, we have two motions.
Go to Senator.
Okay, at this time, if y'all would please join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation of the tax act.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For most heavenly, most heavenly God, be action, the leaders and God who said we go through the night meal, Father God, that we will be able to operate this county, and Father God, we just want to tell you thank you for how you watched over us last night, brought us up early this morning in due time, still closing our right mind, even though we are acting ill, and Father God, as we come forward tonight, Father God, and those that are coming forward, Father God, let everyone govern themselves according, Father God, amen, and all is said and done, Father God, we ask for traveling worship to go back down home, and let it be as we have come out tonight, Father God, that we are part of this being, we ask all the many blessings we serve Jesus through and through his worship, amen.
Amen, thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to our meeting this afternoon, as you can notice, we're all wearing pink in honor of breast cancer awareness month, very important, so please, cancer has affected one of us, or a family member, or a friend, I know, and it's important that we recognize that and support those efforts and keep those who are in need in our prayers, so we're proud to wear our pink at this evening's meeting to represent, so, and it's also very good to have a roomful of concerned citizens to join us tonight, most people are too busy to come and don't care enough, so it means a lot to us to have you here, to participate, to represent, and to be with us, so thank you for being here. At this time, we'll call for a motion or discussion on our agenda.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to remove resolution two, number 2023, that point one from the consent agenda table to the November sixth meeting.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries, sir. At this time, I would invite council members to please meet me down front for a proclamation to Ms. Beatrice Graham from the Jasper County Council in recognition of her 105th birthday. The honor to have you with us this afternoon, we go honor you, so Jasper County has a proclamation that I'm going to leave in your honor for 105th birthday, that's something special. So, whereas Jasper County Council would like to recognize the accomplishments, contributions in the 105th birthday of Ms. Beatrice Graham, and whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham was born in Jasper County on August 29th, 1918, and is a native of South Carolina, and whereas the Jasper County Council would like to recognize Ms. Beatrice Graham as a lifelong resident of Jasper County, and whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham was devoted to serving her county and her community, and whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham was devoted to serving her county and her community, and whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham attends Greater Evangelistic Deliberate Church in Pyle, North Carolina, where her daughter happens to be a pastor, whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham dedicated her adult life to her family as a full-time wife and mother to her eight children and many grandchildren, and whereas Ms. Beatrice Graham is a celebrated mother of her church and routinely volunteers in community efforts extended by her church family, now therefore be it resolved and proclaimed that Jasper County Council in recognition of these contributions to Jasper County and her community be known that this proclamation has been adopted by the Jasper County Council duly assembled here this 12th day of October 2024. Hangs out in the church. Did you, or any of your family want to say anything, Ms. Graham? You don't have to, so there's no pressure, but certainly wanted to ask.
Okay, we just want to thank you for recognizing her sponsors, because truly it is a blessing to be here, 105 years, truly God has a here for reason.
No doubt about that.
So, we really just want to thank you.
Oh, yes ma'am, well, we, and if I'm not mistaken, she is the second oldest person in the state of South Carolina.
Yes, yes.
If you ride a bus, it would be a.
Yes.
I paid for the frequent dancer, my first point. So, the honor and privilege to have you and your entire family here, who all are your family that's with y'all, y'all stand up, and thank y'all for being here. Y'all have a blessed evening, y'all welcome to stay, or, you know, you're welcome to go.
We need to get a pitch, okay?
Don't get in close. You'll be in the newspaper if you pass a smile. Okay, we good? Yeah. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're good.
Yes.
My mother loved out there, she was down in the yard, it was four months, oh, that's a long time.
Yes, it is. I'm sure, oh yeah. Okay, I think we can proceed, and next, we'll have Chris Hansen and Bill Ramsey of MB Con for an update, welcome gentlemen.
Good evening, I'm Chris Hansen with MB Con, and here in the crowd will be Bill Ramsey and Margaret Rush, I'm here to give you an update on some of the capital projects we have going around, I'm sure you're familiar, monthly, we send you guys a detailed report of everything that's going on in the county with capital improvements, and I'd like to go through some of the highlights today. The first highlight is the apron expansion in Rizlin that we started months ago is now complete, we're in the final closeout stages of that, waiting on a few things to be signed off by the engineers and architects, but the work out there is done, and as well as the farmer's market down the street, the majority of the work there is complete, the only thing we have left there is to repair and paint the roof, and then we'll be out of there, so the building's ready to be moved in, we just have to finish up some of those items, and we're hoping to have those done early November.
Awesome.
And then coming into the works is the Pratt Memorial Library renovations, last month, we had the work authorization approved by you all, so the design for that is kicked off and underway, the designers will take a few months to finish that, and we're hoping to have that out for bid in March of next year, 2024, to begin construction in May, so that again is in process and underway. Two things that we have are more in the works to be designed are the courthouse renovations, we're going through and finalizing some scope items with the clerk, of course, there, and then we'll develop the work authorization and budget for that and present that to you all. Same thing with the Cusawatchie Fire Station, we've developed the.
Cusa Hatch.
Cusa Hatch, I'm sorry.
I can't help it.
I've heard it both ways, but now I know the wrong way.
You just heard the appropriate way.
The Cusa Hatchie Fire Station, so we did develop the budget and work authorization for that, I won't go into too much detail, because I think Kim is presenting that tonight, and so I'll be able to answer any questions about that, but in the meantime, if you have any questions about what we have, that completes my highlights for tonight.
Ms. Barbara, do you have any questions? Mr. Garbay? Mr. Kim? Hey, we really appreciate what you guys are doing, you're doing a great job, it's nice to have some capital improvement going on in our county, and certainly, these facilities are in need of repair and. and certainly these facilities are in need of repair and upgrading for the community. So thank you for what you're doing and keep up the good work.
We're happy to be a part of it, so I appreciate it.
Glad to have you. Okay, next, we have Mr. David Teller. We've got a public hearing in consideration of third reading of ordinance 0-2023-18 clarifying that the provisions of ordinance 2023-06 provided certain properties subject to the development agreement entered due by the county in Conduit Street Partners LLC must be conveyed by the property's current owner to the developer thereof.
Thanks, Mr. Chairmembers and council. This is a public hearing. We already had one public hearing last month, or beginning of the month, on this. This particular project has had some delays from outside agencies, and I was talking with the Army Corps of Engineers in approving certain delineations that are necessary to move forward. The original agreement was even closed by a certain date. We previously set that date out a little bit. When we did that, we inadvertently did not include his affiliates. Like most developers, he will take time under different names. So this clarifies that that's an appropriate matter for him to have that transferred into.
So that made any changes since the last reading?
No changes since the last time. The basic thing is to give him time to get the permit done. And by the way, I will be making some topographical changes, some numbering that got off in the version that I sent to the clerk.
Thanks.
But I think something...
At this time, we'll open the floor for a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on this specific topic, please feel free to do so. Public hearing going once, public hearing going twice. Public hearing is now closed. At this time, we'll call for a motion for approval, please.
So move.
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next, we have our treasurer, Mr. Mike Skinner. Consideration of approval of addendum number two, scope and fee addition to March 30th, 2023 engagement letter with Mulvaney and Jenkins. Welcome, Mr. Skinner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, council. Thank you for your time. Last time I stood before you and asked for some money, I think that investment paid off for the county quite well. I'm asking for your trust once again. The initial addendum one with Mulvaney and Jenkins covered some of the topics and things that I wanted to fix within the office, but the initial scope of that initial audit revealed a couple other things that I wanted to fix within the treasurer's office itself, just so we can function a little bit better and move forward as a tax office, well, to make it quite honestly the best in the state, is my view. These couple items here, I'm going to need a little bit more help identifying and digging into, and that's why I've asked for a little bit extra. David Roberts here with Mulvaney and Jenkins, he might address these two topics.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, all of council members. My name is David Roberts. I'm a partner with Mulvaney and Jenkins Government Practice. And the two items that are before you related to our addendum, they really relate to risk exposure for the county that have been identified within our current engagement. The first relates to identified checks that have been cut for reimbursement, typically when people move, that have never been cashed. And so that, right now, we haven't been able to identify a way that the past administration has been following up on those checks. And with that, that relates to the county's compliance with the South Carolina Unclaimed Property Act. And so part of our addendum here would be to look at the achievements, regulations, and practices, and try and quantify the amount of money, if, as applicable, that should be remitted to the state's treasurer to remain in compliance. The second item relates to a number of uncleared or bounced or checks deemed NSF within sufficient funds, and haven't seen evidence within the system of proper follow-up. So there's a number of checks that have been remitted to the county. Again, they haven't presented well. They have bounced, and we haven't noted follow-up action. And so with that, we want to be able to help quantify the amount of revenue that's due to the county, where there hasn't been follow-up action, and then help instill the proper processes and operational measures to move through collections for those. So the two things, the two, those are the two items that are mentioned. Our addendum includes certainly assessing your current environment and really, again, measuring the risk exposure that you have, attempting to quantify that risk exposure, and then implementing practices based on leading practice, not only to mitigate the current situation, but to help prevent it from ever occurring in the future. Happy to answer any questions if there are, sir.
Mr. Kim?
Yeah.
Is that, and is that any questions?
Yeah. What are you talking about?
The addendum is for $21,560, sir.
That's weird, then.
That is in addition to our current scope. So that's for everything that we spoke about tonight, and that's a max fee. We do our work based on time and material, so it's certainly quite possible that we can get the work done for less than that.
Do I have any questions?
Yes, well, so... Did you want to be coming back next month for more, trying something else, or you don't find anything that you need to get done?
No, I think we've got plenty of things to keep us busy and to help put the department on the right track forward. Certainly, if there are other issues, we'll bring them up, but we're going to do everything we can to best position the county and the treasurer's office.
Mr. Garvey, any questions?
Oh, yes. I haven't told them to grant you $21,000 of budget.
I'm sorry. Do you mind repeating the question, sir?
Your budget. Didn't we grant you $21,000 the last time?
So I, we have a current engagement that I believe is for roughly $30,000, and what we're asking for is to do these additional scope items. It would be an additional $21,000. We are not over our current allotted budget or what's been approved at all, and we have not started work on this additional scope item. So we certainly would not go over budget if it is approved, sir.
Well, what we're agreeing, like Mr. Aggie said, if we give this money here, three months from now, you're going to be back up here for another $21,000. And the current budget should be enough to run the treasury department.
So I think...
I mean, you know, sometimes money is not fixed. You can give them a million dollars, and sometimes that won't fix the problem.
Yes, sir.
And that's what concerns me. You keep giving the money and money and money, and you keep bringing in these different groups that handle the treasury department. And I got concerned about that.
So I don't believe that this is over budget for the treasurer's office.
I think what he's telling me is the treasurer's budget, not your...
That's what I...
That's what it is.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garvey, do you have any other questions, or was that...
That's all I have.
Mrs. Clark, any questions?
No, I'm just in accordance with them, but, and you know, I've always been hard on this. Once the budget is passed, they will come in the middle of the year asking for more funds. That's why we have a budget. We want to see it well, but we can't keep going in the... Money's getting money is to make the office operate. And when you came to this county, you were saying what all of you was going to do. And that's what I'm waiting on. I'm not waiting on the issues, the computers, or this year I'm going to show you how your office should be running. That's my concern. And I also have one question. Is the school system, do they have all of their funds that they're supposed to have at this point, including late fees and everything else? Do they have late taxes? Do they have that? Have you cut them a check, gone however you're sending it to the school system? Because this is the way Dr. Anderson pays her bills, teacher's salary, these are the things. So have you, have you done that yet?
Is this a different topic that we can address at another time?
No, it's a question that I'm asking you before I can get to this.
Yes, I'm apportioning the schools' money, as I've been trained and taught, and I've learned since then. Part of this system audit that is in place, and I've been trying to get done since last March, would show how to apportion this money to the school, make sure the schools get the money, make sure the county gets the money. That's the importance of Mulvaney and Jenkins in this office, helping me set this up, because there are no guidelines to go by. I need those guidelines. I'm learning those guidelines. I'm getting those guidelines. We're getting those guidelines in place, but it takes time.
And is nobody in the association that you could call to work with you?
Ma'am, I've gone all up and down the state. I've gotten puzzle pieces put in place, but every county does it different. Every county does it separate. I'm learning. I'm putting the puzzle pieces in place. They're getting there. I just got them a bunch of money from the motor carrier apportements from the state. We're getting there. I just need help. I've asked for help. I'm getting help. It's getting done.
Has the first, I think the first couple of scopes that we approved, have they been completed? Is there any work left that we have not approved? Any work that we have approved not been fulfilled yet?
Yes, sir. We're still in the process of completing our current work that we've been engaged for.
How's that coming?
It's coming very well. We've actually been off-site and on-site a number of times, and we're on-site today and through the next subsequent days as well. But people have been very open and honest. I think it's more of a question of we don't know what we don't know, and as Mr. Skinner said, kind of putting the pieces together. And we're doing that, and in the process of that, some of these other things have transpired or come up.
Any specific challenges or any concern?
As of right now, I think I'd be a little premature to share them, and so I can confirm. But once we issue our report, obviously, we'll go onto the treasurer, and we're certainly happy to come back and present it to you, sir.
Mr. Skinner, I guess what Ms. Barbara was asking is, has the state treasury or treasurer department or treasurer association, have they been a resource for you to try to help you with any of these concerns, to kind of help you? Because I know that they have guidelines, you know, for you to follow, for procedure, because I know basically, in a nutshell, your responsibility is to move money as it's already been allocated, you know, basically, you move money from here to there, pay out the monies that have already been allotted and allocated. I'm just, the $21,000 is not in your budget. So obviously, that creates challenges for county to come up with additional monies. So I'm just making sure that you've exhausted all of the resources before we go spend money, because obviously, we all end on being conservative and making sure that we're doing everything we can with our monies to make sure that we're taking them as far as they'll go without spending them unnecessarily. So I know the treasurer's association has assistance in these situations. Do you agree with that?
Yes, sir. And I think part of the issue is actually having the manpower to get things done. And as I understand it, I think Mr. Skinner's office is operating leaner than the prior administration from an FTE account. And so part of our scope is actually being able to dive in and to help rectify the situation. And the treasurer's association certainly provides guidance and leading practice. But what I think Mr. Skinner needs is really some temporary bodies, hands-on, to help him get it done.
Do we have any vacancies in your office?
We do. I have one put out right now.
Just one?
Yes. And that should put me more ready for the, last year's audit said I had five in-house. I have four right now. That'll give me what the audit from last year says I should have now. And again, I'm using resources all up and down the state, South Carolina Association of Treasurers, the tax collectors. I'm actually going to the meeting tomorrow in Ilton Head to meet with the general or the governmental finance officers. Curtis Loftus himself has given me resources. We're getting it done. Like you said, I just need a little bit more to make sure that it's all in place to go ahead. And again, I am a very conservative homie. So I am remiss. I hate asking for more money to do a job than needs to be. But again, just like the investment of cash baskets, a small investment here, I returned us $2 million over the next year, in the first two months. So I'm making us money. I'm going to get it back. I just need a little bit now. I wasn't privy to the budget of last year. It's put in place this year.
I get it.
So I'm working with the one that was given last year, which was a high and low leaning. She did a lot less. I'm trying to bring us forward. I just need a little help with that.
All right. Counsel, no more questions. Everybody have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the addition of the money for the other.
Do we have a second? Do we have a second? I'm going to second this. But just know that we got to make sure that we practice what we preach.
Yes, sir.
That would mean we're going to get a majority vote. At this time, we'll call, we've got a motion and a second. Those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Those in opposed, motion fails. Thank you all. Okay. Next, we have Ms. Wanda Simmons, consideration of planning commission appointments. Wanda, you have those names for us, please, now.
That's right, ma'am. The planning commission needs two new planning commission members due to vacancies. We have three applications, which I attached to your packets. One from Mr. Lee Steven Grantling, another from Mr. Brent Allen Robinson, and the third from Ms. Kathleen DeCruzzi. Each of the three have their own merits, so we have put before council to ask which two you would like to choose. Additionally, as the two vacancies both were close to their expiration of term dates, I'd like to request that we give them full four-year length terms, which would start as of today and end on 10/16/2027. So all I need is for you to move on to people, please.
Okay, we put those names, please.
Yes, sir. The first one that was on your list was Mr. Lee Steven Grantling. He comes recommended by Chairman Salz, and he submitted his application to walk by. He is a member, a registered voter within Jasper County. And the next is Mr. Brent Allen Robinson. He comes recommended by Ms. Wagner, Mr. Fishburne of the town of Ridgeland, and Chairman Salz. And he is an architect and has an BA in architecture. So I can clearly read. I apologize that he is upstate, but he's a resident. And the third is Ms. Kathleen DeCruzzi and so on. She has an associate's degree, and she has several boards and committees that she has listed. Dr. Keith Chelsea, we're on Jasper County 250 Committee.
Any comments or questions? Hearing the line. At this time, we'll call for a motion for two names for approval for the planning commission board.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we have Gregory and Robinson in those two positions in the planning commission.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask for just a clarification? Under Article 2, generally, all our appointments are for four years. Unless specified, this is an unexpired term. So I take that you're taking the recommendation of the clerk, and the appointment is for four years plus the unexpired portion of that term?
That sounds good. That sounds good. This time, we'll open the floor to the public, we only have one name, and it's my friend George Lipsky. Lipsky, Lipsky. Don't have my glasses on. Trying to read this, too, sir. I'm worried.
I'm great, how you doing?
Good, yes, sir.
Great. So some of you I know, some of you I don't know. My name is George Lipsky, I live in the north side of Sun City, that's part of Jasper County, and I was asked to speak by Karen Wild, who couldn't be here, she's the chairman of the Jasper County Republican Party, and I myself am the executive committeeman for the district in Sun City as part of the party, so just to let you know where I'm coming from. Except all these of you folks know me. So the reason for my being here, and what I wanted to express, was that we elected Mike Skinner as, for his position, based upon his integrity, his organizational skills, and his determination to bring that department up into the 21st century from where it's been. Because the county is growing quickly, as you know better than I do, probably, and so we've got a lot of people coming in, and we need the different government departments for the county to operate in ways that can address and serve the people. So I know that's what Mike is working very hard on doing, so to that end, I'm here to urge you to maybe reconsider and approve the things that he's asking for. I'm a very conservative person, I'm retired, I have to live in a budget, so I'm not wealthy. I've been fortunate in some decisions I've made in some of my work history, but I worked hard, so I know what being conservative with your money is, and I'm certainly against government spending more of my tax dollars, or taking more of it, so I'm fully aware of that. But as you all are aware from your own lives, certainly from working in the council, know that stuff happens, things come up that you didn't expect, things were, that you didn't know, that you have to bite the bullet and deal with them in an appropriate way so that you can move forward, and in moving forward, end up with some bigger benefits down the road, and that's where Mike is coming from, you know, from his request. So on behalf of our constituents in the county, I want to ask that you would reconsider and approve what Mike's asking for in terms of the resources that he needs to accomplish the goals that he set forward originally coming into the office. So that's my statement and my request.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Okay. Next, we'll have our administrator's report, Mr. Andrew Fulgham.
Mr. Chairman, members of council, I had just a couple things to go through with you in my report, the conference of plan review slash moratorium, I wanted to give you an update, try to do that each meeting for you. The stakeholders meeting was held on October the 5th. Ms. Wagner's leading this charge with the consultancy of Denise Grabowski with the symbiosis. I think that went well, I did not attend, but I watched from afar. The next meeting is the master plan community workshop, which will be held on Monday, October the 30th, in this room. Doors open at 5:30 PM, meeting to start at 6:00 PM. And in the middle of those items, you know, I continue to try to wiggle in additional meetings and opportunities for you to address growth-related items. We have tentatively scheduled a Broad River boat tour for you. The environmental community is putting that on, similar to what we did when you went to visit the Slater Track and review how that was purchased for conservation. We thought it would be a good idea to provide an opportunity, although I know the chairman knows the Broad River well from that angle, some of you may not, but we have the ability to use the boat. The Port Royal Sound Foundation has graciously offered to provide a tour for you, for the council and some staff members to do that. That is scheduled for, I believe, the 8th, Wednesday, November the 8th, and so you'll receive a formal invitation a little bit later, we asked that you hold that, save that date. County Council Sales Tax Workshop, we know that we need to get the county council's opinion about which sales taxes, if any, you would like to pursue as referendum questions coming up in the 2024 election, and there are several varieties of those, and we will propose to do a small workshop before your November 6th county council meeting, to have a couple guest speakers to review some of those options for you. I'm pressuring you to make a decision, just so you have all the information so that later you can instruct us how you'd like to proceed, if you'd like to proceed, so that we can start that timeline moving forward, whether it be a transportation sales tax, transportation sales tax with the green belt element, or a green space sales tax. And then finally, the countywide impact fee study, I had the opportunity to meet with our consultant a few weeks ago and review that. We have a local consultant who is working with the municipalities on roadway projects and costs to finish that study up. We're at a point now where it is able to be concluded and presented to you, and we're looking at a January timeframe for a consultant to come and present the results of the countywide impact fee study, which also includes school district fees as well. On the second item, the Jasper County Transportation Committee, I wanted to provide some resources for you in the report that we are now getting from the Department of Transportation, which are very helpful, which are the monthly reports on the CTC funds and the different projects. And as I work through these with Ms. Rose Dobson Elliott, transitioning some of these projects over her, reminding her about them and when they started and where the projects stand, I'll have you note that on the second page of the CTC monthly C fund statement, it lists projects in the state highway system that are current. You'll see two of those I have been able to close out. The first one is PT services for installation of a signal at the intersection of US 278, that's US 278 here in, just outside of Ridgeland, at the intersection of Jaguar Drive in the front of the Ridgeland-Colladine Airport. Don't believe, can't recall who was on council at the time, but that was a CTC project to investigate putting up a traffic light at that intersection, that work has been done, and so that's been closed out. The total dollar amount was slated for almost $60,000, ended up only spending $18,100 on that effort. The second one that I've asked them to close out is professional engineering services for US Highway 278 improvements, that's the 278 widening project, just here in Ridgeland and outside of Ridgeland. As we have discussed before, we have canceled that project, have rescinded the grant offer from the EDA so that we can regroup and potentially make the project larger and request an additional grant for that widening project. And so that project has been removed, and I'll note that on the third page of the report, there is an older project that is engineering services for drainage issues in the south Hardyville area. Some of you may recall, that was Route 17 South, we actually did that study, presented it to you, but apparently we have not received or made requests for reimbursement for that $19,000 that that study cost, so we'll work on, try to submit that for reimbursement as well. So I thought that might be helpful to you, to see the projects that have been out there, projects that we are working with as the county being the sponsor, and try to close those out. The additional information on the road work, active road work and future projects was provided part of the last study. They had a meeting recently, October the 6th, and I did not attend, but I did receive the packet of information prior to, and I included that in your report so that you could see all the different projects that are proposed and ongoing in both Jasper and Beaufort County. And following up with the transportation area, Ms. Rose Dobson Elliott attended a recent Jasper County Transportation Meeting, Transportation Meeting and Committee Meeting, and there was a request for funding for some right-of-way work near the Honey Hill Battlefield, and I was gonna let Rose, with my Rose coming up and explaining what that request was, and the request also comes with potentially the county being the sponsor of that project. I would like, after you hear the description of the project, to see if there's general consensus, if you have any issues with us moving forward as the county staff being the sponsor of that project for you.
Thank you, council, good evening. Yes, I'm here with the Transportation Committee, Mr. Woods is here tonight, and he's actually brought the project forward, it's actually a safety issue that they presented before DOT, and DOT sent them back to the county, and we're looking to sponsor the project, council approves so, and go after the transportation funding to pay for. Basically, it's clearing the right-of-way to open up that curve before you turn in, make it safer. Do you have any questions, if anybody has any?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Garvey, any questions, Ms. Clark?
Mr. Chairman, no issues with us proceeding as a sponsored project?
No.
We'll work on doing that, and we'll bring it back to you when it's appropriate. That's all I have for my reporting, unless you have any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Fulgham, anybody?
No.
Not very good?
Thank you.
I would like to add to that, since we got council member comments on the 19th, I've got SC DOT congressional member coming down along with some other DOT officials to do an assessment on 278 from Ridgeland North. Apparently, in my discussions, we have an opportunity for an emergency funding situation for that highway, so they've invited me to ride along with them and go look at it and see what opportunities that might provide us. That road is in terrible condition, along with just about every other road in our county. I have been wearing them out, but we really need our state delegation, since these are state roads, we need those guys working for us and Columbia to help us. I said earlier tonight that it seems like Jasper County always gets the crumbs and everybody else gets the nuggets, but pick up the phone and call your state representative and your state senator and tell them how bad a situation we got with our roads there, in terrible shape, and hopefully we'll have something good come out of our meeting on the 19th. Also, we have our county public meeting here on October 30th, that begins at 6:00. That is our meeting to go over our zoning and what we're doing with our moratorium right now. That's an opportunity for the community to come here, what we're trying to do, give your input, and please mark your calendars for that as well. November 1st, we have our Jasper County Chamber of Commerce Scholarship Golf Tournament at Hilton Head Lakes. That is where we engage each of the county's high schools, and the staff actually selects a recipient for the scholarships for graduating senior, and the chamber is the funding source to that, and we make the presentations to that student that the staff selects at graduation. So those are just a few things I wanted to mention. We had an update from N.D. Khan on what we have going on with our capital improvement plan, especially excited about what the future holds for Pratt Memorial Laboratory. That is a huge resource, I know as a child I would go there myself, and it's a big resource for those people who need to use a computer, have internet, and tons of resources for books and other tutoring opportunities, and to get that building refurbished, revitalized, and as a new asset for our community to use, it's pretty exciting. So I'm really looking forward to see what the end result is for that, and that's gonna be pretty special for our community to have that. And with that, I'll ask the council members if they have any comments, and we'll start with Madam Vice Chair, Ms. Barbara Clark.
No, I don't have any comments, but I would like to congratulate the Hardyville, I remember they changed the name, I don't know his name on these screens now, but I know it's down in Hardyville. They played at the Pollock Service Station on last Thursday because they have a redevocation. They have put another taco barrel in there, and a couple of other things, right there in the city of Hardyville, and the children did so well, Pollock presented them a check for $20,000, which was exceptional. Our children are doing well. And Dr. Anderson says she's going to buy more instruments for the children, she wants every penny of it to be used on the children. So I think that was a fascinating thing. So let's continue to encourage our children, because if we don't educate them now and do what we need to do, you're gonna see them again in the long run, but it might be over a gun barrel or something. So we got to get our children where we need them to be, and that's all I have.
Mr. Garvey, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a reconsideration on that vote, would the treasurer, if I'm allowed to do that?
Well, you were on the prevailing side, but I don't know that, Mr. Teller, you'd like to fix me to say something?
Well, I was gonna say, just what you said, typically a motion reconsider is made by a member, doesn't require second from the member, but a member that voted on prevailing side, which would be one of the two members who voted against them, but it's, that's just the rule that we have.
We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay. We're on the agenda.
And while I have your attention, Mr. Chairman, you were so eager with that good news that you gave us, council's report, we need to go back, we just finish it up and take up the consent agenda, I was 14 through 19, and the exception 18, I don't think we voted on the consent agenda.
We didn't do that in the beginning when we reviewed it?
No.
Okay. It's time I call for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
With the exception filed 18.
Got a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You should have told me.
Well, you were honorable with all that good news that you had, I had one interruption.
Well, hey, there you think you know everything, so there you go fail, so I need all the help I can get.
Mr. Chairman, have you seen this?
Yes, ma'am.
We are not against Mr. Skinner having things for his office. You can't keep bringing this council $21,000, $12,000, because then you are not looking over the report to spend the taxpayers' dollars like it should be spent. When people get the notion that this is a coming vote council, you keep asking for thousands of dollars, we're in trouble, and we don't need to do that. If a coming vote is canceled, unless we have had it before us and looked at it and know what it's for, it needs to be declined and brought back so we will have time to look over what we have.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Okay. At this time, I'd like to thank everybody for being here this evening, and at this time, we'll call for a motion to adjourn.
You forgot something.
I probably did. What did I forget?
Me.
Forgive me, I'm sorry. Well, I got David telling me this, Cole doing that, I'm trying to juggle everything up here, so thank you.
I just have a few small comments.
I'm sorry.
Number one is I went to the Georgia courts, very discouraging. Last year, we were mentioned at the end saying, "In the future." This year, nothing. So it's just discouraging. And number two is I want to thank everybody for working together. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Appreciate it.
Past actions, I didn't get you to, didn't I? I'm sorry.
Georgia courts, the last 16 years.
It's past actions.
I didn't want to thank you all for what I done offered to the bed.
Amen.
I didn't get a chance to repaint the night, but Eathor said it'd be a thing out, he'd be out Friday. So I didn't paint, I'm already Friday. So when they say they're gonna cancel awareness, already we've been painting until, you know, and I realized that Cosmic Kempa sent something, I was already in that dress, I should have been painting again, you know.
Well, you got to paint women, then, haven't you?
Yes. We didn't think anybody would come and offer, you know. I'll say that, Mr. Garbey, I'm not against the trailer, you know, what he got to do. You know, sometimes you just got to go forward and, and, and do what you can do and let things work out by itself because if he starts giving up money for every little thing, then what are the other officers gonna do when they come and say, "Okay, I need $12,000 to get this right here." You got to drag them, you know, and then have it over Calabrese. It'd be like, use everybody's hand because you can't do for one thing, you can't do for all of them. You know, it's the same thing with, with changing up the color. You know, if you let one change, then, then the color will be a little scar. Color will be exactly that. This one more green, this one more blue, this one, you know, like more lavender, this one, that one more light pink, that will be hell, you got a mess. You know, these are the other things we got to look at. We just can't just jump and just change things like that. It's a process that we got to go through, you know. We ain't only just wanting to profit.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay. Is it all right to call for a motion to adjourn?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. All in favor, stand up. Y'all have a good evening.